Good morning. The regular committee on health meeting is now called to order. May we all rise for the invocation?
In vocation, Almighty Father, thank you for every seat that has been filled here today. For every mind and heart that feels the presence of this meeting, we thank you, Lord. Only you knows what we are set to accomplish today, and only you can see the perfect detail in every end and every beginning. Your righteousness transcends our efforts and understanding. Forgive us for our pride that threatens to unqualify us. Strengthen our confidence in you who have made us to be. Bless this meeting today, all those present, as well as the lives of those we will encounter afterward. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Thank you. Next is the calling of the roll. Honorable Fuentebela, yes, I move to dispense with the calling of the roll, Mr. Chair.
Check on the motion.
There's a duly seconded motion to dispense with the calling of the roll. We are hearing objection, the same is approved. Next is the reading and approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
Mr. Chair, I move for the previous minutes. And approve the same.
Second, there's a duly seconded motion to dispense with reading of the minutes of the previous meeting and the adoption of the same. Hearing objection, the same is approved. The chair would now recognize the members of the committee who are here present this morning. We have our vice chair, Honorable Daphne Lagon of the 6th District of Cebu. Honorable Solomon Chunggalaw of the Lone District of Ifugao. Honorable Arnie Fuentebelia of the 4th District of Camarinesur. And Honorable Yulohio Rodriguez of the Lone District of Catanduanes. Comsec, please recognize our resource person this morning.
Good morning, Chair, honorable members of the committee. In attendance for today as resource persons are from the Department of Health, from the Health Facility Development Bureau, Mr. Glenn Cruz, and the Chief of Hospital of the Ferdinand Edeline Marcos Emergency Hospital in Mayoyao, Province of Ifugao, Dr. May C. Diaz. That would be all for now, Chair.
Thank you, Comsec. Good morning once again, distinguished members of the committee and esteemed guests. In the agenda of the committee meeting today are the six local bills of vital importance in the delivery of the healthcare system of our country for our fellow Filipinos and upgrading the various health facilities in the different parts of the country. We shall now recognize the authors of the bill one at a time for their sponsorship. And we will deliberate and decide on the bills one at a time also. We now call on Honorable Solomon Chunggalaw of the Lone District of Ifugao to sponsor his bill. House Bill Number 7989, an act providing for the restoration and rehabilitation with the of Major Ferdinand Edeline Marcos Emergency Hospital and appropriating funds therefore. Honorable Chunggalaw is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I have nothing to add to the explanatory note of the bill. Though, except to say that this bill also is just restoring a historic back and that will be a gift perhaps to the President of the Saudi because the restoration of the Major Edeline Marcos Emergency Hospital is a gift. Well, this had where he was wounded and mortally wounded when the Japanese were pursuing him during the Second World War. And they said that to the heroic deeds of the late President Ferdinand Marcos. So I will just adopt the explanatory note and perhaps move for the approval of the bill.
Thank you, Honorable Chunggalaw. May we now hear the position of the Department of Health, Mr. Glenn Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to read the proposed position paper of the Department of Health regarding House Bill Number 7989. As soon as the position paper has been approved and signed by our Secretary of Health, Chodaro Hibosa, we will submit the signed copy to the committee. So regarding the restoration and rehabilitation of the Major Ferdinand Edeline Marcos Emergency Hospital, the Department of Health poses no objection to the restoration and rehabilitation of this hospital, provided that it remains under the direct supervision and control of the province pursuant to Executive Order Number 138, 2021. This shall ensure that the healthcare provider network of the province continuously deliver the necessary healthcare services from primary to tertiary healthcare. So the DOH through its Cordillera Administrative Region Center for Health Development may still provide the necessary technical assistance and monitor the compliance of the hospital in accordance to the Philippine Health Facility Development Plan as well as the local investment and local health facility development plans of the province. And so shall be respectfully submitted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn Cruz. May we now recognize the Chief of Hospital of Major Ferdinand Edeline Marcos Emergency Hospital, Dr. May Diaz.
In my slides, I have, I pictured the old Major Ferdinand E. Marcos Hospital, which is located at Panopdopan District Hospital, where it was there in the mountains where Major Ferdinand Marcos was wounded severely. And he was followed by Japanese guerrilla army. And in that place, Panopdopan, a certain native, Ifugao native, Lakai Hodom, was, he saw that there was an injured soldier and he covered him in a rice granary container where they found palay. And he covered him with kagon grass. So when the Japanese army came and asked Lakai Hodom if he saw any injured Filipino soldier, he denied and saved him, such that in the evening of that day, Lakai Hodom called for his native friends and they went to carry Major Ferdinand Marcos and brought him to the rice granary. They treated him until he recovered. Then when he recovered, Major Ferdinand Marcos went on as a soldier for the Philippine Army. Then later, when President Marcos became a president of the Philippines, His Excellency called for Lakai Hodom Banahol to treat him and give gratitude for the goodness and kindness that he showed to the Major Ferdinand Marcos. And Lakai Hodom asked for a hospital for his place so he could help his people. So indeed, President Ferdinand Marcos built 25-bed capacity hospital, the Major Ferdinand E. Marcos Emergency Hospital. So that's the old one, the old Major Ferdinand E. Marcos Hospital. And those are the wards, OB, pedia, surgery, medicine. And that's the x-ray room, which are all dilapidated. That's the main entrance to administrative office, surrounded by forests. And this is the rice granary where Major Ferdinand E. Marcos fell down. And that's where Lakai Hodom hid him in the rice granary, treated him, and until he recovered. So that's still standing at the moment. And that's an old picture which we found. You can see President Ferdinand Marcos with Lakai Hodom in Malacanyang. See, so in gratitude, President Marcos built the Major Ferdinand E. Marcos Emergency Hospital. Then looking at the family album, here is the picture of Hodom, Lakai Hodom, with his family, that's the only daughter. And still the daughter is alive, that's the third picture. She's alive and she has one son. She is ninety, ninety-plus years old now. Then in, on November 10, 1981, Lakai Hodom died and he was buried near the Major Ferdinand E. Marcos Emergency Hospital. So you can see the tomb of Lakai Hodom. Then in 1994, we were devolved from national government. The Panopdopan, the Major Ferdinand Marcos was devolved to PLGU. So all of our funds for management, medicines, medical supplies came from PLGU or the Provincial Local Government Unit of Ifugao, which is good for only 25 patients. But we cater patients from Nueva Viscaya, which are nearby, Isabela, Santiago, and Difun, Kirino. So our funds are easily depleted. But we cannot refuse these patients because most of them are Ifugaus who migrated to other provinces. But when they get sick, they feel sentimental and they come back to our Panopdopan District Hospital, which they feel they are at home and they can be easily taken care of by the doctors. So this is, by the way, I'm an obstetrician-gynecologist trained at Fabelia. So despite that I'm the chief, I still do cesarean section in the hospital. So going to the wards, that's the outpatient department, you can see that there are rooms, but they are filled up because we are only 25 beds, but 80 patients are admitted. So hangang hallway, hangang dyan, oh, we admit patients, 80 to 100 patients. That's the medicine ward and the pedia ward. You can see that they are overflowing, but we still treat them. Then that's the emergency room department with doctors, nurses, midwives. We do triage and admit all patients. That's the ER laboratory for diagnostic procedures. So you can see na umaapaw talaga ang patients. But there, and then let me tell you about the top 10 morbidity and causes of illness in Panopdopan, Lamut, Ifugao. The number one is pneumonia. For the year 2021, we admitted 813 patients for pneumonia. The most of them pa are senior citizens who are very weak. Of course, they have decreased immune system. And second are single spontaneous delivery. Good, so normal vaginal delivery. By the way, we also have increased teenage pregnancies. Mataas ang cases ng teenage pregnancies. Students who are get pregnant, may boyfriend, 12 years old, 13 years old. Mataas ang teenage pregnancies namin. Then the number three are pregnancy which are delivered by cesarean section. The number four, poisoning. Yung mataas ang nag umiinom ng pesticide kasi nagpa- na ano sila yung patiwakal daba. Suicide cases, meron pa yung 14-year-old, I admitted the patient pero dead on arrival. Kasi 14-year-old student of Ifsu, yung Ifugao State University, he was asking for a cellphone from his dad. Pero hindi binilan at punta sa likod, nagbigti. So mataas ang suicide cases din namin. Then number four, top 10 are injuries, yung mga vehicular accidents. Then abortion, number five. Yung abortion pwedeng induced, pwedeng non-induced. Then number six are respiratory, yung mga bronchitis, acute upper respiratory infection. Number seven, urinary system, yung UTI. Number eight, diarrhea, gastroenteritis. Number nine, appendicitis, colicestitis, diseases of the intestine. And number 10, essential hypertension. Number 11 are cerebral infarction or mga stroke victims. So that's for number, a year 2021. Then year 2022, our number one is yung mga examination and investigation procedures. Number two, normal spontaneous vaginal delivery. Three is pneumonia, still top 10 ang pneumonia. Number four, normal spontaneous delivery. Number five, cesarean section. Then six, UTI. Seven are yung amniotic fluid, yung mga buntis na basta nagrupture yung bag of water and we do cesarean section, just to save the baby. Then number nine are pregnancies of abortion. Number 10, hypertension. And number 11, stroke, cerebral infarction. The mission of Panopdopan District Hospital is to ensure collective well-being and happiness of the Ifugao people in the provision of quality patient care, that's our mission. And the vision of Ifugao Panopdopan District Hospital, a globally competitive healthcare institution, culturally vibrant, with preserved heritage for humanity. And our core values are respectfulness, integrity, cooperation, and excellence. I'll just mention some about Lamut. Lamut is a gateway to Ifugao because we are located in a boundary between Nueva Viscaya, Kirino, and Ifugao. That's Lamut. Our present population is 26,235. We have 26 barangays. It's, we belong to the Lone District of Ifugao with 11 municipalities. We are 26 kilometers away from Lagawe, which is the capital of Ifugao. And we are 291 kilometers away from Manila. Our present mayor is Honorable Victor Mar Bunol. Our governor is Honorable Jerry U. Dalipog. And our present congressman is our Honorable Solomon D. Chungala. With, thank you very much. And thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Dr. Diaz, for a very comprehensive presentation.
You're welcome.
Just a question. The present hospital is known as Panopdopan Infirmary Hospital?
District Hospital.
Admin district hospital.
We are a level one.
It's a level one hospital? And it's operating how many beds, 25?
Bed, but actually 80 to 100 patients are admitted.
And the intention, Honorable Chunggalaw, is to rehabilitate and maintain its level one status under the PLGU, Honorable Chunggalaw?
Thank you, Chairman. May I pay that by comment be of the record? Of the record, that's the reason why I adopted the explanatory note. Because it's complete. The reason why this hospital has been abandoned is because of pure politics. And the fact that the time it was abandoned, the Magdilaw, the God of Beetherton wanted to raise the record of the heroic deeds of the late President Ferdinand Marcos. And the presence of the Major Ferdinand Edeline Marcos Emergency Hospital at the very side where he was wounded and he fell nearly to death, being pursued by Japanese soldiers, is contrary to the allegation that he had the heroic deeds during the war. That's why they didn't bring the living in the mga heroes. So say, di pa kay, nangyari yan. Binalitan yung bakalan na Major Edeline Marcos to Panopdopan District Hospital. And then in 2011, they transferred yung Panopdopan and decided to another site in Bandy. Bandy Twitchy, the different barangay ng Malayo because the Ifugao General Hospital was condemned in Lagawe. And then they made this, I say, the church hospital to serve as the Ifugao General Hospital. So we are just correcting historical distortions. That's why I would like that it should be restored and rehabilitated because that is a gift of the late President Marcos to Hodom. The old man personally, buhayang, sinabi namin, we need the hospital to save baby people. So that is the reason why I find this bill is just proper perhaps. I say give to the president to restore and rehabilitate this hospital in the name of the father. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Honorable Chunggalaw. So it will remain as a level one, okay? And under the PLGU?
It's okay with me, I think I talked with the governor already because the Ifugao General Hospital is now rehabilitated in Lagawe. So what I'm less is return this hospital to the original site in the original name of the maker.
And lastly, I'm just wondering. Of course, we know that the former President Marcos Senior was a major during World War II. How about, why not president? Why retain the rank of major when in fact he was president of the Philippines?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When the late president called the old man Hodom in Malacanyang and Hodom, the old man asked for a hospital. And Hodom, the old man asked for a hospital. It was the instruction of the late president that it be named a Major Ferdinand Edeline Marcos. As a testament to his shortage or to his services earlier during the war. He was president then in nineteen sixty-five when he felled it. But he opted the name it as Major Ferdinand Edeline Ma- Emergency Hospital.
Thank you, Honorable Chungala. Um, any other comments from our members?
Motion to approve the bill, uh, Mr. Chair?
Seconded.
So, there's a motion, uh, by Honorable Fuentebelia, duly seconded by, uh, Honorable, uh, Rodriguez, that House Bill Number seven nine eight nine, uh, be approved. Uh, hearing no objection, the same is approved. Congratulations, uh, Honorable Chungala.
Uh, may, may I express my gratitude to the chair, to the committee, and to my colleagues who moved for its approval and seconded motion. And to the representative of the Panopdopan District Secretary, Doctor Diaz. And the representative of the of the Department of Health for not objecting to that, then they should propose to say, I think if the president appointing the Secretary of Health. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, before we proceed, we'd like to acknowledge the presence of, uh, our member, Honorable Bonifacio Bosita of the One Rider Party List. Thank you very much. Uh, we now proceed with, uh, with House Bill Number nine three seven eight. An act establishing a fifty-bed district hospital under the Department of Health in the municipality of Cordoba, province of Cebu, and appropriating funds therefore by Honorable Daphne A. Lagon and Sunny S. L. Lagon. Honorable Lagon is now recognized.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chair. Good morning to our esteemed colleagues, uh, our guests. Um, House Bill Number nine three seven eight. This bill seeks to establish a fifty-bed district hospital under the control and supervision of the Department of Health in the municipality of Cordoba, Cebu Province. Please allow me to give a concise but clear background of the municipality of Cordoba. A third income-class municipality situated in the island of Mactan. It is a part of Cebu Province's sixth legislative district, but is separated from the mainland Cebu. Before the year two thousand ten, the sixth legislative district of Cebu was made up of a highly urbanized city of Mandawi and Lapulapo and the municipalities of Consolation and Cordova. The city of Mandawi and the municipality of Consolation are situated in mainland Cebu while Lapulapo City and municipality of Cordova are located in Mactan Island. In two thousand ten, Lapulapo was constituted into a lone legislative district and Mandawi City achieved the same status in two thousand twenty-two. These developments have isolated the municipality of Cordova. It shares location in Mactan Island with the city of Lapulapo, which is highly Macta- how- highly urbanized city and separate congressional district. While being a part of Cebu Province's sixth legislative district, as of the present, Cordova has no hospital, public or private. Its residents seek medical treatment from private hospitals in Lapulapo, Mandawi, and Cebu cities. For those who cannot afford the high cost of private hospitals of Lapulapo City Hospital is the only al- alternative being the nearest public hospital to the municipality. But please take note that the Lapulapo City Hospital is funded and administered by the city government of Lapulapo. And I must emphasize again that Lapulapo City is a highly urbanized city no longer under the administrative supervision of the province of Cebu and constitutes a distinct and separate congressional district. It is for this purpose that this measure is proposed to establish a district hospital under the control and supervision of the Department of Health in the municipality of Cordova to cater to the medical needs of its seventy thousand residents. Once approved, the Cordoba District Hospital can cater as well to the residents of neighboring barangays of Lapulapo City, which will be closer to the Cordoba District Hospital than to the Lapulapo City Hospital. In view of the above premises, the prompt approval of this measure is earnestly sought and recommended. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Lagon. Uh, may we now, uh, listen to the position of the Department of Health? Mr. Glenn Cruz is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'd, um, with regard to House Bill Number nine three seven eight, I'd like to read the proposed position paper of the Department of Health. And as soon as this is approved and signed by our Secretary of Health, Doctor Chidora Herbosa, we will accordingly submit this to the committee. So with regard to position paper, House Bill Number nine three seven eight on the establishment of a fifty-bed, this fifty-bed district hospital um, in the municipality of Cordoba, province of Cebu. The DOH interposes no objection to the proposed measure. But we recommend that the hospital shall be under the direct supervision and control of the province of Cebu because it shall ensure that the provincial healthcare provider network will be able to continuously deliver the necessary healthcare services from primary to tertiary healthcare. Um, in addition, the DOH through its Central Visayas Center for Health Development may provide the technical assistance upon its establishment and operations and monitor the compliance to the standards in accordance to the Local Investment Plan for Health, the Provincial Health Facility Development Plans, and of course, the Philippine Health Facility Development Plan. So we shall respectfully submit. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz.
Mr. Chair, motion to approve, uh, Fuentebelia? Yes, motion to approve the bill, Mr. Chair.
Seconded.
So there's a motion by Honorable Fuentebelia, duly seconded by Honorable Rodriguez, that, uh, House Bill Number nine three seven eight be approved. Hearing no objection, the same is approved. Congratulations, uh, Honorable Lagon. We now, uh, proceed with House Bill Number, uh, seven three three seven. An act converting the Tigaon Primary Hospital to a specialty hospital to be known as the Tigaon Maternity Hospital by Honorable Arnie Fuentebelia. Honorable Fuentebelia is now recognized.
To the Honorable Chairman, Seriako Bigato Junior, the honorable members of this committee, the House Committee on Health, our public and private stakeholders, good morning to all. On behalf of my constituents in the fourth district of Camarinisur, I stand before you today to advocate for the conversion of the Tigaon Primary Hospital to a specialized hospital, the Tigaon Maternity Hospital, with the welfare of our expectant mothers and their children in the fourth district of Camarinisur in mind. The biggest public hospital in Camarinisur, the Bicol Medical Center, is at least forty-three kilometers away from the municipality, closest to the provincial center in Naga. This translates at least a travel of at least one to two hours. And this implies you all, uh, implies you already have your own vehicle to traverse the easiest route from Tigaon, Camarinisur, all the way to Naga. The journey will take longer if you have to use public transportation, posing risks and complications to both expectant mothers and their children, given the time and distance between Tigaon and the BMC. For context, a study conducted by the DOH indicates that the average time of travel for seeking medical attention is at eighty-four minutes for the Bicol region. This is second longest nationwide, just four minutes under Karaga. As it stands, the BMC is the nearest facility equipped to handle complex maternity cases. Given the BMC services, a majority of the patients from across all five legislative districts in Camarinisur, it is overburdened daily, and the DOH knows that. Further, a study conducted on maternal deaths in the Bicol region in the past ten years reveals, uh, fluctuations in the maternity mortality rate with fifteen point seven percent of death occurring in transit or referral facilities. This maternal mortality rate of, or MMR, showed an increase up to two thousand twenty-one, with a decline only in two thousand twenty-two. One suggestion by this study is to strengthen service delivery networks to effect- effectively manage hemorrhage and hypertension-related emergencies, which a dedicated maternity hospital will seek to offset. Data in two thousand twenty-one reveals maternal mortality rate in the Bicol region is still high at one hundred forty-four point zero two, with the Bicol region ranking third. Just next, Luzambanga Peninsula and Metro Manila, which have MMRs of one hundred fifty point thirty-eight and one hundred fifty point thirty-two respectively. This is just the issue of maternal mortality, of maternal mortality. In the Philippines, over sixty thousand children die yearly bef- before their fifth, uh, birthday due to complications from birth. Given the difficulty of accessing medical services in our district and the risk involved in, uh, prenatal and neonatal complication, it will benefit our people in Tigaon and its nearby towns to have a specialized maternity hospital which can cater to complex and emergency, emergency situations. Um, our district, Mr. Chairman, we call it partido because, uh, from the Spanish word partido, which means we are separated. So we have to survive on our own. But we are proud in our district that we have our own state university already. We have our own water system. We drink direct from the faucet. We have connected, uh, all the towns, the ten towns kosa. Before, we have five mainland and we have five coastal towns. So now we are all connected. At present, the Tigaon Primary Hospital can only accommodate six expectant mothers at a time with only six beds dedicated for OBGYN patients. And this was built, um, way back two thousand eight when I was the mayor of Tigaon. So LGU po yung nagahandle noon. And naglakas lob lang po kami, even we are a third-class municipality, but now Tigaon is the third-class municipality. And, uh, Secretary Ted Herbosa is well-versed in our district because, uh, hindi pa po siya secretary noon, wala pa po siya sa gobyerno. Uh, we conduct, uh, free surgical mission. And ginagawa po yan sa bayan ng sangay and ginawa na rin po yan sa bayan ng Tigaon. So there are only two midwives per twelve-hour shift with just one doctor on duty to cater to not only OB-GYN cases, but as well as surgical, internal medicine, and pediatric concerns. With the resources at its disposal, the Tigaon Primary Hospital will have to refer elsewhere, further endangering the expectant mother and their child. This investment in healthcare is backed by the numbers, the risk involved, and their lives we wish to save. This will ensure our mothers in the district, its nearby towns, have, uh, have the support and resources needed to deliver healthy babies and to build the strong families. As a whole, this measure seeks to build a stronger and healthier future for the fourth district of Camarinisur. Once again, I urge my fellow legislators to consider the difficulty of attaining timely healthcare in our district as well as the geographical challenges my constituents face. And in addition, uh, Mr. Chair, I would like to, uh, manifest that, uh, even the mayor of Tigaon, who is my sister, is very supportive of the bill. And we want, um, the DOH, the Department of Health, uh, um, to adapt the Tigaon Primary Hospital and make it into a, a specialized hospital un- under the Department of Health. And I would like to, uh, add, Mr. Chair, that I have been constantly, for a year now, talking to then, oh, uh, Acting Secretary Verheere and now, uh, our OIC, uh, Secretary Ted Herbosa regarding this matter. And we have been discussing this also with the Director of BMC. Actually, it was them who suggested that, that the Tigaon Primary Hospital should be made to a s- specialized maternity hospital for the services in the district. And I would like to, um, um, uh, tell the Chair and our constituents, I mean, our, our colleagues and the DOH, that we have the facility already. We have the building. It's a twenty, uh, bed capacity, eh, twenty, eh. Uh, but it's just a primary hospital and we know that Tigaon is only a third-class municipality. So we want to, uh, extend the services of healthcare, not only for Tigaon, but for the entire district. And, uh, just for your information, the Animal Bite Center is also there in the Tigaon Primary Hospital, which was approved by the DOH. So we have an operating room. Um, uh, we have an X-ray room. So I would like to manifest this, that, uh, uh, that, that the Tigaon Primary Hospital uh, should be under the supervision, direct supervision of the DOH and, uh, make it a specialized hospital, especially for maternity. Uh, so good af- uh, good morning and I hope for a productive, uh, day ahead for the committee. Good morning to all.
Thank you, Honorable Fuentebelia, uh, Mr. Glenn Cruz of the Department of Health.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And as this is also a proposed position paper, we will be sub- we will be submitting this accordingly, was sign- once signed by our Secretary of Health. We have prepared this position paper at the time that, um, uh, following the actual filing of the bill. So in the days that, uh, fa- that followed the filing of the bill and, uh, and it was indexed as House Bill Number seven three three seven. So the Department of Health actually poses no objection to the con- to the conversion of the Tigaon Primary Hospital, especially into a women's and children's hospital, as we are all aware um, through our Center for Health Development about the situation in Camarinisur, Norte, uh, Camarinisur. Um, we would also like to recommend the following with ano, with this no, uh, no objection position. First is that it should be under the province of Camarinisur to operate so that Camarinisur will be able to operate fully its provincial-level healthcare provider network. Now, the, the existing primary hospital ma- could be upgraded to level one. Um, level one with, of course, with, uh, with the focus on maternity and children's care um, that would serve the province, especially in the areas or the district where Tigaon is located. And that the Tigaon Hospital should be linked to an apex and end-of-feral hospital, which is currently in, uh, in the province, that would be Bicol Medical Center, which is a four hundred fifty-bed, level-three DOH hospital in Naga City. And it's approximately one hour and seven minutes away from the town of Tigaon. Now, the DOH through the Bicol Center for Health Development will continue to support the province and monitor the compliance um, of this hospital in accordance with the health facility development plans of the country as well as the province, including the local investment plans for health. And so shall we be submitting? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn Cruz. Um, any reaction from Honorable?
Yes, uh, thank you for that, um, especially from, uh, the DOH for supporting this measure. Um, we just want that, uh, it should be under the Department of Health uh, to institutionalize this program. So we don't care of, uh, any personality, whoever, the governor, the congressman, or even the mayor. Because we just want to institutionalize. Because as I've said a while ago, so separated po kami. That's why the, uh, we wanted that the uh, maternity hospital for Tigaon should be under the DOH. But, um, uh, um, I, I, I heard the suggestion of the DOH and I respect that. And actually, I've been talking to Secretary, uh, former Sec- Acting Secretary Verheere and even, uh, Secretary Ted Herbosa, and even the, uh, Director of, uh, the Bicol Medical Center. Actually, malaki pong support ang gagawin nila. Actually, malaki pong support ang gagawin nila sa amin, even for the nurses, even for the doctors, just to promote our newly-established hospital kung ma-approve na po dito sa ating pong kongreso. So, um, we are planning to make it a fifty-bed capacity to serve the six-hundred-thousand population in our district. Our district is as big as the province of Catanduanes. Ganun po kalaki 'yung aming pong distrito. Actually, and that area namin is, I think it's bigger than Catanduanes. So ganun po 'yung kalaki 'yung aming distrito. Pero gusto ko lang po kumain pa dito na baka idugtong na po 'yung Catanduanes sa aming pong distrito, Karamoran 'yung pinaka malapit. Actually, there is a feasibility study already and the Congressman Rodriguez knows this. No, so with that, plus magiging pong maganda. I'm just explaining this para makita niyo po 'yung whole picture nung aming pong problema sa aming distrito dahil napakalaki po talaga ng aming distrito. And ang komposisyon po dyan, may mainland, may coastal, may bundok, may isla. Ganun po kahirap ang aming pong distrito. And fifty percent of the Fisher folks of the entire province is from our district. So if you imagine that, ganun po kahirap ang buhay sa aming distrito. That's why nagse-sumikap po kami, idugtong 'yung ating pong mga coastal areas into the national road. Kaya po nagsumikap kami, magkaroon po kami ng state university. And now, the state university po namin is, kada po mga towns tinulagyan po namin iskwalan, kasi we want the people na travel, trava na access na makapag-aral po sila. So ganun po 'yung ginagawa namin. Ang nakikita namin na malaking kakulangan, itong hospital na lang po. Nam, tunay na makakatulong po sa aming pong distrito. Specialization on maternity, but it doesn't mean hanggan dun lang po tayo. No, because you know naman lung center and KDI, they specialize on kidney, but they do heart operation also, maternity, et cetera. This is just a small step. So we are making baby steps. So we are asking DOH to support this bill. I know you're very supportive of this, but we want the DOH to handle this. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I would like to, uh, make some amendment lang regarding the title, Mr. Chair. Because the title is an act converting the Tigaon Primary Hospital to a specialty hospital to be known as the Tigaon Maternity Hospital and appropriating funds therefore. And with a fifty bed.
Yeah, so upgrading from twenty to fifty beds.
Twenty to fifty.
Thank you, Honorable Fentebele.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Honorable Rodriguez?
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, I would like to, uh, manifest for the approval of this bill, uh, of Congressman Fentebele, Mr. Chair.
Take a motion.
Assamended and styled, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There's a motion by Honorable Rodriguez, Julie Seconded, that House Bill Number seven-three-three-seven be approved, subject to the amendments and style. Hearing no objection, the same is approved. Congratulations, Honorable Fentebele. We now move to House Bill Number nine-five-nine-five, an act upgrading the Eastern Bicol Medical Center in Viracatan Duanes to a tertiary-level hospital attached to the Department of Health and appropriating funds therefore by Honorable Yolohio Rodriguez. Honorable Rodriguez is now recognized.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, good morning, uh, Mr. Chair and our distinguished members of this committee. Uh, Mr. Chair, allow me to read my sponsorship speech on House Bill nine-five-nine-five. Uh, this bill seeks to revert the Eastern Bicol Medical Center under the exclusive control of the Department of Health and no longer as a local government unit-controlled hospital. Eastern Bicol Medical Center is located in the capital town of Viracatan Duanes, an island in the Bicol region. The province comprises Panay, Palumbanis group of islands and other minor surrounding islets and rocks. The eleven municipalities of Catanduanes are Virac, its capital municipality, San Andres, Karamoran, San Miguel, Biga, Batu, Pangaliban, Bagamanok, Pandan, Higmuto, and Baras. With the enactment of RA seventy-one-sixty, otherwise known as the Local Government Code of nineteen-ninety-one, at first, many believed it was a direct cure to the problems besetting local government units, particularly on education, health, and delivery of essential services. Most of our population embraced it with so much positivity and enthusiasm as it would effectively gave respite to the national government and can be focused more on other concern, concern our nation needs at that time. Unfortunately, and perhaps, many of us here know what happens next. Devolution causes repairable damage to our health facilities, including the delivery of quality services to our needy patients. The island province of Catanduanes is no exception. EBMC has become an unwilling victim of devolution, such as evident of the state of physical structure, deteriorated buildings, poorly lighted and ventilated, crowded, blocked drainage, foul smelling, hazardous work. This reflects as an organization that needs more capacity for long-term planning and budget support. Hospital management only implements the budget on a day-to-day basis. A look at its inventory of equipment, medical supplies, stacks of drugs, medicines, shows a poorly managed logistics system where the procuring entity and the producer are inadequately linked. This causes frequent stock up, stock out, stockouts and downtime. Its top complement barely fulfills the minimum licensing requirement and there is no formal continuing education program, much less a career development program. Its top attitude and morale have been eroded due to the poor working conditions. The hospital management system have not been regularly updated, creating an inefficient and costly system that consumes scarce budget. Lastly, its performance is not seriously measured. Thus, it is difficult to evaluate if it does attain its objective. What adds to our misery is that Catanduanes is an island province isolated from the rest of the provinces in the Bicol region due to limited surgical and medical operations. The ABMC operates, patients have to endure travel by sea. Those who can afford to travel by plane to avail of efficient medical services who are to those whose condition are critical ended up losing their loved ones in the process to the consternation of families who should have benefited from the services of our government hospital. If passed this into law, ABMC will not be under the control of the Department of will be under the control of the Department of Health whose budgetary allocations are already well-defined and systematically organized in the general and professional. The national government is assumed to take care of everything, including its operation. Quality health services should be a topmost priority. Drastic measures should be taken in order to address this decayed long problem that plagued the ABMC since their presentation begs the indulgence of honorable chairman of this committee for the swift passage of this bill. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and magandang umaga satin lahat. Just mabalo po.
Thank you, Honorable Rodriguez. I can fully relate to your sentiment. Uh, me coming from Batanes, an island province too.
Oh, Mr. Chair, parias lang 'yung problema natin. Actually, Mr. Chair, uh, repile na itong bill na ito eh. Yung during the time of Congressman Santiago and Congressman Sarminto, finalito. So ngayon, repile ko dahil talaga itong kailangan namin. As I said nga, maya Congressman Arne Fentebele. Actually, minsan 'yung mga pasyente nila roon sa area nila, kasi tapatan lang kami ng isla. Misan nadadala pa sa amin dahil mas malapit ang tawid nila sa dagat. Kaysa magbabaylan sila papuntang naga, nadadala pa sa amin. Kaya talaga napaka-importante, not only for the Catanduanes people, but the other side of the island. Opo, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Rodriguez, Mr. Glenn Cruz of the Department of Health.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, with the, this is a proposed position paper that, uh, that was developed and coordinated with the concerned Department of Health units. Um, that was developed as soon as the, as soon as the bill was filed and I noted that we have received it sometime in November. But the proposed position paper for House Bill Number nine-five-nine-five, uh, which is about the upgrading of the Eastern Bicol Medical Center in Viracatan Duanes into a tertiary-level hospital, um, reads as follows, that the Department of Health poses no objection to upgrade EBMC into a tertiary-level hospital. But we also recommend that it should remain under the direct supervision and control of the province of Catanduanes. We would also, we are noting here in our proposed position paper with regard to the development of an apex hospital that would serve specifically for the island province, that the EBMC through a memorandum of agreement can, uh, can actually arrange beyond the limitations of its geographic location. But it also depends on the need of the population and the ease of transport from the EBMC to the apex hospital. Currently, in the region, um, the eligible apex hospitals in the, in the region are Bicol Medical Center in Naga City and Bicol Regional Hospital and Medical Center in the Gaspe City. Now, the DOH through the Bicol Center for Health Development will continue to provide the necessary technical assistance and monitor the compliance of the EBMC. Even as we also recommend that sometime in the future, it should also increase its service capability from Level Two to Level Three. Um, and so we shall be submitting this, uh, this position paper as soon as signed by our secretary, Chodora Herbosa. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz, Honorable Rodriguez.
Mr. Chair, as I have said, island, Catanduanes is an island. Alam niyo naman po, na kami dalawin kami ng kalamidad. So pag tinatamaan kami, pag wala po kaming transportasyon, alumbay, sea, by plane, papano naman po 'yung mga pasyente namin dun? Na talaga na ang kailangan ng medical assistance, lalo na hindi naman po komplito natin mga medical equipment dun. Maghaantay na lang ba kaming tumire kami dun? So isla po kami, dapat medyo bigyan 'yung kami ng pansin dito. As ang hirap tumawid, pag kami tinatamaan ng ganyan, which is sabi nga ni, kung gato, isla kami. Mabot sana kung palagi magandang panahon. And then, sabi ko nga, tatuwid ka roon sa, tatuwid tayo ng, ng ligaspe. So siguro naman, naaga, napakahirap po. Napakahirap kung emergency na itatayin pa nun, ba pagdating dun, wala na. Eh, papano na tinabes 'yan tong problema? Matagal na itong problema na, siguro naman. Medyo bigyan 'yun mang pansin 'yung mga isla. Kasi kami ang ang kailangan ng tulong ng gobyerno. Kami ang hingilangan. Hindi 'yung sinasabi nga ni, ako ang Fentebele, ayun, nadadaanan ng Maharlika Highway. Okay, magaling, accessible sila eh. Pero paano naman kami? Ha? Napaga nitong, okay lang sanang magandang panahon palagi. Sakin kanapod 'yung mga pasyente natin, papano naman 'yung, yun mga nasanayla 'yan? Itong sa amin po, ito po ang sa'kin pinapag-usap. And I hope ito pong bill ko ma-approve ito, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Rodriguez. Just for clarification, uh, in the title of the bill, Honorable Rodriguez, the, it's, uh, upgrading the Eastern Bicol Medical Center to a tertiary-level hospital attached to the Department of Health. Is the word attached the same as under direct supervision and control, uh, Mr. Glenn Cruz? Is that the same? When your, when a hospital is attached to a hospital, uh, to the DOH or, or a hospital is under the direct control and supervision of the Department of Health, are they the same or no?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the question. Um, there is, uh, there's technically no difference, but we have a preference that the statement should be under the direct supervision and control as, um, in, in certain legislative proposals or measures such as this. Because, um, in administrative terms, the attachment actually refers to a different kind of agency. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Honorable Rodriguez, would you like to?
Uh, Mr. Chair, can I amend, attached to, uh, direct supervision of, uh, DOH, Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Honorable Rodriguez. Um, any other comments from the other members?
Me. I move for the approval of the bill as amended under the direct supervision of DOH.
Second motion, Mr. Chair. So there's a motion by Honorable Chunggalaw and Julie Seconded by Honorable Busita and Honorable Lagon that the House Bill Number nine-five-nine-five be approved. Hearing no objection, the same is approved. Congratulations, Honorable Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Honorable Chunggalaw. Thank you, our distinguished.
We now proceed to the last bill, House Bill Number seven-zero-two-nine, an act converting the Palanan Station Hospital in the Municipality of Palanan, Province of Isabela, into a Level One Hospital under direct control and supervision of the Department of Health, increasing its bed capacity from ten to fifty beds and appropriating funds therefore by Honorable Ed Christopher Go. But since Honorable Go is not present, uh, we now recognize Honorable Chunggalaw to sponsor in behalf of the author.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The only reason why I would dispose her in the absence of Congressman Christopher Go is that the district of Congressman Go is adjacent and next to my lonely district of Bebra. And approval of this bill will help us also because also by considering the Eastern Board of Bebra goes to Isabella. So with that, may I move that the explanatory note of the bill be considered as the sponsorship of this bill for and behalf of Congressman Christopher Go.
Thank you, Honorable Chunggalaw, uh, Mr. Glenn Cruz of the Department of Health.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I shall read highlights from this proposed position paper with regard to House Bill Number seven-zero-two-nine or the conversion of the Palanan Station Hospital into a Level One Hospital in the Municipality of Palanan, Province of Isabela. The Department of Health poses no objection to the conversion into a Level One Hospital of the Palanan Station Hospital and to increase its capacity accordingly to fifty beds. Um, with that, our recommendations is that they should remain under the direct supervision and control of the province of Isabela in order so that its provincial healthcare provider network can deliver continuous healthcare from primary to tertiary care. And then that the Palanan Station Hospital shall be linked to an apex and/or end-referral hospital that delivers specialty care. that delivers specialty care services not expected from the provincial healthcare provider network. And at the moment, in the Province of Isabela and the region, the newest, uh, the newest, um, uh, Level Three hospitals is, includes the D O H Hospital in Santiago City or Southern Isabella Medical Center. Now, the D O H through the Kagayan Valley Center for Health Development will continue to support the province and monitor the compliance of the hospital um, in accordance with the Philippine Health Facility Development Plan and its local, uh, and the provincial local investment plans for health and the provincial health facility development plans. And so shall we respectfully submit this as soon as, um, this is reviewed and, um, approved by our Secretary of Health, Dr. Chodora Herbosa. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Glenn Cruz. Um, any comment from the House members? Hi. Upon muna? Honorable Rodriguez?
Mr. Chair, I move for the approval of House Bill, uh, nine, uh, nine, seven-zero-two-nine, subject for style and amendment, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion by Honorable Rodriguez, Julie Seconded by Honorable, uh, Lagon, that House Bill Number seven-zero-two-nine be approved. Hearing no objection, the same is approved. Congratulations. Favorite motion? Honorable Chunggalaw? Favorite motion?
He think there's no other must to be considered, Mr. Chair. I move that adjourn.
Seconded.
There's a motion to adjourn, hearing no objection, the same is approved. Uh, since this is our last meeting for the year, uh, we'd like to extend our heartfelt Merry Christmas greetings to each and everyone. Thank you very much, uh, honorable colleagues and our respective resource person this morning. Maraming maraming salamat. Merry Christmas sa atin lahat.
Merry Christmas, Chairman.